Ready to start, are we?
We're in the process.
A break.
Good evening.
Evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you. Welcome to the common council meeting for the city of Beech Grove. Today's date is October twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five. My name is James Kaufman, Mayor. I'll defer to the clerk treasurer.
And we will call, we'll introduce ourselves, starting on my right.
Chris Duffer, Council at Large.
Dan McMillan, Council at Large.
Elizabeth Lamping, Councilperson District One.
Samantha Stratton, Clerk Treasurer.
Ryan Mackens, Council District Two.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Michael McGarn, Council District Three.
Avis Fryson, Councilwoman District Four.
Mike Ernest, Council District Five.
Thank you. We're standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Up next, like to do indication and like to invite Councilwoman Fryson to give us an indication.
Father God, it's in the mighty name of Jesus that we thank you for all your goodness, your kindness, and your mercy. We thank you for who you are in our life right now. You are the King of King, the Lord over everything. Father, we thank you for this meeting tonight. We thank you for how you have protected all of us and got us here safely, oh God. We thank you for taking care of the citizens of Beech Grove. Father, we thank you for what you're gonna do in this meeting tonight. We ask that you would bind us together, that one can't fall for the other, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you. There are no special presentations this evening. Move on to committee reports. There is no RDC report. We will speak about the RDC under new business this evening. We have a brief financial report from the clerk treasurer. Clerk Treasurer Stratton.
All righty, good evening. Outside of tonight's budget meeting discussions, I do not have any other updates than the current bank balances and fund balances. The bank account balances are listed below as of October twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five. These totals do not include all claims that were approved earlier this evening. I've also included the city's fund balances to limit any confusion. City Corporation Bank Account, six million, one hundred thirty-two thousand, one hundred eighty-seven dollars and twenty-four cents. Utility, one million, eighty-three thousand, nine hundred seventy-eight dollars and forty-eight cents. Criminal Investigation Fund Bank Account, four hundred thirty thousand, eight hundred forty-six dollars and eighty-one cents. RDC General Fund Bank Account, one million, eight hundred seventy-nine thousand, six hundred twenty-nine dollars and ninety-three cents. The General Fund is at one, one million, two hundred eighty-six thousand, nine hundred sixty-five dollars and eighteen cents. The Sewage Utility Fund, one hundred eighty-two thousand, six hundred eighty-seven dollars and sixty-six cents. And the Stormwater Utility Fund is at five hundred fifty-one thousand, three hundred fourteen dollars and thirty-two cents. Respectfully submitted, Samantha Stratton, Clerk Treasurer.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All right, thank you, Clerk Treasurer Stratton. Move on to minutes. You have our minutes from the last city council meeting dated October sixth, two thousand and twenty-five. Any questions or comments? No questions or comments, entertain a motion to approve the...
I have a...
Oh, yes, sir.
Comment. On page one, approval of minutes. It says Council Mattkins instead of Counselor Mattkins.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
All right. Motion to approve the city council minutes as amended?
I make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye abstain, because I was not present.
Looks like a vote of six, four, and one abstain. Thank you. Public comment. Sir?
Yes, Pam Stalard.
Pam.
I just, Pam Stalard, Seven-Eleven Churchman Avenue, Beech Grove, Indiana. I just have three points I'd like to touch on this evening. Either one of these working?
Pull that down, yes. Pull that one down and just speak right of the joke, please.
Okay. Okay, maybe it's working now. Okay, the first thing I'd like to touch on is the new budget. What I'm seeing and hearing that this new budget is pretty incredible for a city that keeps hollering, "We're going broke, we're going broke." Yet we turn around and give everybody a big raise. Something is just not exactly right there. I don't understand that. We had several very noble department heads that said they would give up their increases. As a matter of fact, the council said they would give up their increases. But I understand that's no longer an issue, that possibly they plan on going ahead and taking the increase. I don't understand this. First, our sewer's going broke, so, "Oh, it's going broke, we're gonna lose it, so let's make everybody's bill higher." If we transfer a lot of these non-sewer employees out of the sewer fund into the general fund, we'd have a whole lot more money usable in the sewer fund. So I urge you, please reconsider a yes vote on this new budget and please consider voting no. The park bridge is another issue. That park bridge has been closed due to the safety and security of the people because of speeding drivers. The drivers are not speeding on that vehicular bridge, they're speeding through the park. Let's have police monitor the speeders through the park and not close an innocent bridge that the people have paid for and own. We have a pedestrian bridge already. The vehicular bridge has a pedestrian sidewalk, so that's two avenues for pedestrians. We need this vehicular bridge that the people bought and paid for and reconstructed. I think the police need to do a better job monitoring the safety and security of the people in the park, and that includes the speeders, if indeed there are speeders in there. The last thing I have to touch on is I'd like to see a twenty-four-hour police department. Last time I walked into that police department, it was in the early evening. Nobody was there. Nobody behind the window in the lobby. So there's a bank of a couple of phones. I picked up their phone, went straight to IMPD, and they said, "Well, if you want to speak to a Beech Grove police officer, you have to go to their police station." I said, "Lady, I am standing in the lobby of their police station, and there's nobody here. It says to call this on this phone." So I hope we put a human being in the lobby of our police station so at least we appear to be a twenty-four-seven police department. I think we owe that to the citizens who might be in urgent need of a police officer or seeking refuge at the police station. We deserve to have somebody there to take care of their needs. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else sign up to speak? No. Thank you. Move on to unfinished business from our previous meeting. We have General Ordinance Number Five, two thousand and twenty-five, which is a two thousand and twenty-six salary ordinance up for second reading this evening. If there are any questions or comments, entertain a motion to read it by title only. It was read into the record at our last meeting.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? General Ordinance Number Five, two thousand and twenty-five, which is a two thousand and twenty-six salary ordinance up for second reading this evening.
General Ordinance Number Five, two thousand and twenty-five, is a salary ordinance fixing the biweekly rate for appointed and elected officials and employees for the city of Beech Grove, Indiana, in the year two thousand and twenty-six.
Thank you. General Ordinance Number Five, two thousand and twenty-five, which is a two thousand and twenty-six salary ordinance is up for second reading this evening. Entertaining motion to approve.
I got a question. Go ahead, Wes.
You go, you go.
I thought Pam brought up an excellent idea on pulling some of these salaries out of the sewer and putting into the general fund. I have no issue with the Mayor and Clerk Treasurers' partial salary coming out there and the person that replaced Phil Groganis. I think all the rest of them should go into the... Into the general fund. And I'd like to make that as a motion.
You have to have specific numbers.
Yeah, pay for, not of which department, which salaries, which positions, which departments will then increase their budgets by a million dollars? So what information? We need a lot more information than that. This is just a salary, it's not the budget.
Okay, but if it's in the salary ordinance, that would be a portion of the budget.
Correct, and the sewer, but the sewer salaries are not portioned in our current budget. So if that were to continue down that line of thinking, the whole other ordinance would have to be amended as well. And we don't have eight hundred thousand dollars to spare in the general fund budget.
Well, with all them healthy raises you got from the citizens...
Yeah, it was a three percent cost of living raise, sir.
We don't have an eight hundred thousand dollar raise in sewer rates.
I'm talking about the sewer rate increase and...
Totally different things, sir.
But that's not...
Anyway, that, you know, we don't mind raising the money for the citizens, but, you know, we're broke then. Now all of a sudden, we got money to give everybody in the city a raise.
I think what was said is that if the rates weren't raised, then they'd be broke.
Well...
And that was raised to, that, based off of our financial advisor, the rates were presented to the council and the council approved those rates.
And the funding for those salaries comes directly from the sewer. There is no funding for those positions in the general fund or the other funds that are included in the two thousand and twenty-six budget that you approve. So we would be short eight hundred some thousand dollars on the budget if you were to do that.
No.
Instead of saying, yes.
No, I disagree with you on that.
How, tell me.
I don't... First of all, I don't have to explain anything to you. I'm telling the citizens of Beech Grove, they got it put to them when they got this increase, and I hope you all know who voted for it and who voted against it.
Dan, can I ask you a question?
So there's a motion?
I think there was. I'm not quite sure what that motion was, but we need a little bit more specifics.
The motion is to keep the portion of the Mayor's salary, Clerk Treasurer's salary, and whoever replaced Phil Groganis, which I don't even know who that was, and them three salaries...
He's been with us for several years. His name's Joe Rainey.
That's fine.
And he's spoken to you also as well, so, Joe Rainey is his name.
Okay, Joe Rainey.
You should know that, sir.
Well, I don't, but thank you for reminding me. But anyway, everyone else's salary should be taken out and put into the general fund.
Is there a second?
All right, let's see. All right, General Ordinance Number Five, two thousand and twenty-five, the two thousand and twenty-six salary ordinance is up for second reading. Entertaining motion to approve.
I just...
Oh, yes, ma'am, you did have a question, I'm sorry.
Sorry. I was not here first read, unfortunately, because not feeling well. But I just wanted to make it, I made it very clear that I did not want the elected officials to get a raise. I would like for that to be taken out. I know it's not a lot of money. I saw Samantha's post about it, or her reply about it when we, from emails. But I just really feel that I really don't want to get an increase in the rate, and I don't know if anybody wants to consider taking that out, but that would be my proposal, is to take out the raise for the elected officials. And if not, then anybody who has a fundraiser, come and see me. I would love to donate some of my city earnings to help a fundraiser, either be bank, either be the band or a school fundraiser or something. So that's just how I feel strongly about us not taking any more money from the budget.
Didn't we already at one point say that we would forego our raises?
It was discussed, discussed...
And then in the, yes, it was discussed.
At the workshop.
Yes. And then the documents that were sent out after we made all those cuts, put everything back in because of such a small amount, and then nobody amended it last.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
So the motion is for the council pay to go back to the two thousand and twenty-five?
That's correct, that's what I would, that's for me personally, that's how I feel.
Is there a second?
Is it just the council, or was it all, you said all elected?
Yeah.
I think we need to list them by name in the lines so we can amend the actual ordinance and make sure we're including everyone you're wanting.
You want me to name them?
Yes, please.
Mayor Kaufman, Clerk Treasurer Stratton, Council at Large Duffer, Council District... At Large McMillan, Council District One Lamping, Council District Three, excuse me, Mike Hellegarn, Council District Four Fryson, and Council District Five.
Mike Ernest.
Ernest.
And Council.
And Council Two.
Ryan Mackens.
Ryan Mackens, thank you.
So the judge?
No judge?
No board either.
Are you fine with the judge getting a raise?
I don't have a problem with the judge getting a raise, but I think they'll, yeah, from...
Okay, so the judge can get a raise, but not the clerk treasurer, the mayor, or the city council members?
I didn't really think about that so much, honestly. I just feel, was thinking about this group that's, I thought about this group that's voting on the budget, is how I was thinking about it.
Yeah, I don't...
And the attorney.
He doesn't have a salary, is that included in this?
I was thinking more about the people that were voting on this budget.
So the council?
Yes.
Council and all elected officials and accept the judge, correct?
Yeah, that's, that was my thought, the people that are actually voting.
So not, not just the, I just, so not just the council?
But I'm not voting, just to be clear, neither is the mayor.
Okay, you want just the council not to get a raise, or you want...
The mayor and the clerk treasurer and the council.
Okay, you said the only people that'll vote, so...
Well, excuse me.
That's okay.
The people who, I guess, organize the budget and vote on the budget.
Okay, so there's a motion to revert the salaries for the mayor, the clerk treasurer, the seven council members.
Mayor, why don't you, why don't you do it? You, Samantha, then the council, since they're all similarly situated.
Say what, I'm sorry.
Pardon?
Say what, I'm sorry.
What do you mean?
Well, I think there should be three separate votes. I think there should be, there should be one for the mayor, one for the clerk treasurer, and then since the council is all similarly situated, that'd be the third vote.
Before we vote, I need to, like, we need a second first, if we want to go there, and then I need to see what happens after the second. Because we, I have to reread the whole thing at that point, so, and find the actual numbers, because they are not this.
We're looking at, it's about, what, fifty-six hundred dollars, I believe, somewhere around there.
Correct.
But did that include the judge or not?
That did include the judge, and that included Board of Works as well.
And the Board of Works. So there's, I guess there's a motion to amend the salary ordinance as, on second reading, to remove the cost of living adjustments for the mayor, the clerk treasurer, and the city council members. Anybody else?
That's fine.
Not the Board of Works members or the judge?
That's fine.
There's no second?
No second?
I've said, can I?
Okay, yeah, that's, that's...
I didn't hear you ask for a second.
Yeah, is there a second?
Yes.
Okay. We're gonna do a voice vote, starting with Counselor Duffer.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
So that is...
Four to three, and I need to request a break, so I can get the correct numbers in here.
Okay.
So ten-minute break?
Yeah.
I have to, we can't pass it without the real numbers, and I don't have the real numbers.
I thought, didn't it fail four-three?
No.
No, it passed.
Passed four-three, okay, got it.
Okay, we'll resume at seven-thirty.
Okay. We'll take a ten-minute break to reconfigure the salary ordinance for two thousand and twenty-six.
Can we play the theme of Jeopardy or something?
That's a good idea.
We gotta lead by example?
Absolutely.
I guess I was...
I didn't sign up for this for money. Exactly, exactly, me neither.
I guess my thing, but they're saying it's not a big much difference there.
No, but it's more of a symbolic, you know what I'm saying?
Put a little bit of five thousand something back.
It's gotta start somehow.
Give five thousand something back.
So city writing checks that, you know, what's coming up, we have no idea. So why not start racing for it now, instead of just, you know, that's own caution of the wind.
We don't really know what's going to happen with SB one.
We have no idea what's gonna come of that, you know, if we're gonna exclude the city or not.
I do agree with that, but I think we, if we was gonna do this, we should have thrown in a lot more than five thousand dollars. I think we should be, should have been looking at names as well.
Well, I think, I think it should have been, I'm sitting here, so...
This is the last one that anybody was gonna get.
Next year, it's all, it's up to you.
I don't know, I mean, we're talking, I mean, it's hard telling when it's ever gonna happen again, honestly. And cost of living has changed, and it just keeps going. So, I mean, if this three percent would have happened, that would have been the last one anybody's gonna see probably for three to five years. You know? And cost of living is probably gonna go up another ten percent in those three to five years.
I told, I told my district today, right here, that next year moving forward, there's no raises, there's nothing, we won't be able to do it. I don't care if these microphones on. Like, I told them right here, they all know. I communicated that. I said, I was gonna take all the way across the board, everybody just wait until all of this for one year. We can do this for one year, we can follow this, do that standing overhead.
But I was one of them that was all for the guts, before we did, yeah. And just, we're, we're, we got a lot, a lot of reading in. Is there anything else anybody else wants to put in here before we give up? I mean, honestly, we, if we're opening the door, we might as well open the door.
Then she gonna have to go back to get it.
I, I mean, it would, we'd be...
If we don't have a specific order.
Yeah, I mean, it's, there's a lot they would have to present, for sure.
I just don't, personally, I can't justify it.
But I'm not doing it for the left to right.
Where she live, she live in Florida? So are we even entertaining the per usage?
So we need to get back to that, we just kind of go with road, because that's just our preference. You know, I never stopped, I never, I never, I never, I'm even a whip, because I don't have a city all the time, I should just attract. You're all well, you're all well. Which house is yours, Mike?
Right next to it.
Right across.
Right next to it, back.
Well, I was driving down the street, and I was like, I wonder where he lives. I knew it was... We had going west, and the first one on the left there. Just before he gets to the middle schools on the right, and on the first drive on the left. Heading west? Yeah. Towards like, towards Starbucks, or what used to be Starbucks? You're on this side? From left?
More iron.
Ran across the documents, I can't really make it out.
No, no, or still be, forty...
Okay, it's, okay.
Yeah, it's under five.
I got in the old car, it's still to this day.
I just can't ask this, I can't ask this.
Yours? My step shed, utility shed on my property. I didn't have one person, quarter seconds. Should be getting paid.
You pay as a structure.
I sure do, I sure do.
I'm pretty sure I'd be looking into that.
Yeah, well, I just found that out through Perry Township here not too long ago.
You've been doing this for how long?
This council.
No, paying them this.
Oh, gosh. All are locked. We developed the property in nineteen twenty-nine, twenty-eight. Yes, it wasn't that since nineteen twenty-nine? Grandpa...
Yeah, his grandfather.
Grandpa won the property at, the name was having that saying to build the parish up, whatever that about? I had a rabbit, and Grandpa won four lots. Wow.
I said, ten minutes, has it been ten minutes?
He had a meat market in that square, he definitely had a pork alley, he should be, he closed it up, absolutely got it in there. Beech Grove, he retired.
Yeah. That seems, uh... All right, no good. That's what I was asking.
Yeah, I don't either.
My mind is so tired.
Yeah, but it's like, I got a thing, I think I might look at it. Kind of weird at first, but there was, it was my property showed by the state of Indiana, it was there. And it was in the right neighborhood.
Sorry, I forgot your name, my mind is so tired.
What's that?
My mind is so tired, I forgot.
That's all right, I got forgettable, man.
No, you don't. No, you don't.
They're having to change in this, what the twenty-five budget was. She shouldn't even have to do anything.
Yeah, I don't know what changes it. Probably freelance.
We talked about that, Dan, but I was kind of confused how we would be able to do that, seeing as how we had to do, contractually, we had to raise the fire and the police. I don't know how that we could go back to the twenty-five budget with those, those contracts.
Those three salaries would mean is, our salaries plus the mayor and clerk treasurer would go back to twenty-five?
Oh, no, no, I'm not talking about us. When you said the twenty-five budget, going back to the hundred percent and cutting five percent off of that, when you first talked about that, I didn't understand how we'd even be able to do something like that with the contracts that we have with the police and everybody. Yeah, I was gonna say, I mean, which that would have killed us, really, because...
Well, five percent, they don't have to come with salaries or what have you. Five percent.
Do you got a child that's gonna take over?
It's fifty thousand, you just, fifty thousand, bottom line is the budget, not including salaries.
Yeah, I got you, yeah, I can't have...
Not including salaries.
You know, Grandpa's dad, everyone would tell them, they just...
Take one, two, three, and four, pass it, you know, take four, two, three, and four, the budget.
But they turned around and dropped what, how much, almost?
Well, they didn't drop nothing, because the budget went up six hundred and some thousand.
We haven't got that far, she just paid...
Well, they cut, they cut a hundred and fifty thousand off the police.
They might have, but the total budget is what you need to...
But she always wants in the family, some kind of security blanket.
And that was just from the salaries?
She said, one day she wants me to give it to my daughter, so, just for that salad, yeah, yeah. No, I'm oldest of four.
Two, three, two, three, and four has...
But the other three, honestly, don't want nothing to do with it, so...
They held it.
My, well, my youngest brother, that's well, but my middle brother and my sister, they don't live in the church. So they, yeah, they, I'll never leave, but they, they don't.
Yeah, yeah.
His daughter lives there now, so a full generation.
Yeah, I, I thought...
Because it's only five thousand dollars, it's the perception for the citizen, that people that were asking...
It's some.
Here we go.
It's some.
She right on time, eight, seven twenty-nine. Gotta give her props. Well, we just, eighty-six, we just took her in here, rings, so she's probably a little...
We're gonna get started again, guys. I know the cameras have been live rolling, so...
Uh-oh.
Oh.
Hopefully.
All right, welcome back. So, the clerk treasurer is back now. I know she made some amendments. There is a vote to remove the cost of living adjustments for the mayor, the clerk treasurer, and the seven council members from the two thousand twenty six salary ordinance. So, I'll defer to the clerk treasurer. I have a few copies here, if anybody wants a copy.
I'd like one.
Yes, please.
Thanks, sir.
Sure.
I did. Or Audrey did.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The amendments that were proposed are as follows. Mayor's office, mayor from corporation, biweekly, one thousand four hundred fifteen dollars and four cents, yearly thirty six thousand seven hundred ninety one dollars. Mayor from sewage, biweekly, one thousand two hundred seven dollars and eighty eight cents, yearly thirty one thousand four hundred five dollars. From the clerk treasurer's office, amending clerk treasurer from corporation, one thousand four hundred forty three dollars and eighty one cents, biweekly, yearly thirty seven thousand five hundred thirty nine dollars. From sewage, biweekly, one thousand eighty nine dollars and eighty five cents, yearly twenty eight thousand three hundred thirty six dollars. And city of Beech Grove common council, council members, biweekly, one hundred eighty five dollars and forty eight cents, and yearly four thousand eight hundred twenty two dollars and fifty four cents. This amends the salary ordinance with a difference of three thousand two hundred seventy one dollars and eighty six cents.
All right, so can you say that so that it went down? How much? Three thousand two hundred and what?
Three thousand two hundred seventy one dollars and eighty six cents.
All right, so salary ordinance, sorry, general ordinance number five, two thousand twenty five, is up for second reading as amended. Entertaining motion to approve.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second. Go ahead.
Counselor, who seconded that?
Avis is fine.
Counselor Freyson, going to start with voice votes, starting home with Counsel Duffer.
No.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
So, it looks like it passes by a vote of four, two, three. General ordinance number five, two thousand twenty five, which is the two thousand twenty six salary ordinance, is up for third and final reading this evening. Entertaining motion to read into the record by title only.
I'll make said motion, read in title only.
Counsel Mackens.
I'll second one.
Counsel Freyson, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? General ordinance number five, two thousand twenty five, which is the two thousand twenty six salary ordinance, is up for third and final reading this evening.
With the changes.
There's no changes.
Well, I mean, with, with, okay, yeah.
Once we've a vote on it, it's.
But that's fine. I just want to make sure.
Yeah, we already, yeah, we already approved that, Counsel Lamping.
General ordinance number five, two thousand twenty five, is a salary ordinance fixing the biweekly rate for appointed and elected officials and employees for the city of Beech Grove, Indiana in the year twenty twenty six.
All right, it's up for third and final reading. Comments or questions? Otherwise, entertaining motion to approve.
I'll make said motion to approve.
I'll second.
All those in favor, start with my, on my left, Counsel Duffer.
No.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
General ordinance number five, two thousand twenty five, passes on third and final reading by a vote of four, two, three. Thank you, counselors. Up next, we have general ordinance number six, two thousand twenty five, which is the two thousand twenty six budget. That is up for second reading this evening. Before we continue, I'll have the clerk treasurer read it into the record.
Ordinance number six, be it ordained, resolved by the city of Beech Grove that for the expenses of Beech Grove Civil City for the year ending December thirty first, twenty twenty six, the sums herein specified are hereby appropriated and ordered set apart out of the several funds herein named and for the purposes herein specified, subject to the laws governing the same. Such sums herein appropriated shall be held to include all expenditures authorized to be made during the year unless otherwise expressly stipulated and provided by, provided for by law. In addition, for the purposes of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses of Beech Grove Civil City, the property tax levies and property tax rates, as herein specified, are included herein. Budget form four B for all funds must be completed and submitted in the manner prescribed by the Department of Local Government Finance. This ordinance resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval by the city of Beech Grove. Name of adopting entity, city of Beech Grove. Name of adopting body, common council and mayor. Date of adoption, October twentieth, twenty twenty five. Fund, rainy day, adopted budget, zero, adopted tax levy, zero, adopted tax rate, zero. General fund, adopted budget, twelve million four hundred thirteen dollars, twelve million four hundred thirteen thousand nine hundred thirty nine dollars. Adopted tax levy, eight million one hundred ten thousand dollars. Adopted tax rate, one point one five eight six. Public safety, local income tax, adopted budget, two million seven hundred twenty eight thousand six hundred ninety one dollars. Adopted tax levy, zero. Adopted tax rate, zero. Lease rental payment, adopted budget, one million seventy seven thousand dollars. Adopted tax levy, one million thirty four thousand dollars. Adopted tax rate, zero point one four seven seven. Fire pension, adopted budget, forty thousand. Adopted tax levy, zero. Adopted tax rate, zero. Police pension, adopted budget, five hundred seventy thousand six hundred twenty dollars. Adopted tax levy, two thousand dollars. Adopted tax rate, zero point zero 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 three. Local road and street, adopted budget, four hundred seventy six thousand five hundred eighty five dollars. Adopted tax levy, zero. Adopted tax rate, zero. Motor vehicle highway, adopted budget, one million five hundred ninety two thousand three hundred forty five dollars. Adopted tax levy, one million sixteen thousand dollars. Adopted tax rate, zero point one four five one. Continuing education, adopted budget, twenty thousand. Adopted tax levy, zero. Adopted tax rate, zero. Park non-reverting capital, adopted budget, ten thousand dollars. Adopted tax levy, zero. Adopted tax rate, zero. For a total of those funds listed, adopted budget, eighteen million nine hundred twenty nine thousand one hundred eighty dollars. Adopted tax levy for all funds, ten million one hundred sixty two thousand dollars, and adopted tax rate, one point four five one seven. Home rule funds that are not reviewed by the Department of Local Government Finance. Home rule fund eight, which is SRO's, adopted budget, four hundred ninety five thousand two hundred forty dollars. Home rule fund ten, which is opioid restricted, adopted budget, thirteen thousand one seventy nine. Home rule fund eleven, which is opioid non-restricted, is three thousand two hundred twenty five dollars, for a total of five hundred eleven thousand dollars, five hundred eleven thousand six hundred forty four dollars.
Thank you. General ordinance number six, two thousand twenty five, is up for a second reading this evening. Questions or comments?
I have a question on the council's attorney fees. I would like them to stay where they were at seventy, I believe it's seventy five hundred, and you lowered them to five thousand.
We can't go back up after publishing.
You can't, you can't, yeah.
Yeah, that was on the documents since September second, and after you advertise a budget, you can always lower it, but you cannot hire it, raise it, excuse me.
Any other questions or comments? Entertaining motion to approve general ordinance number six, two thousand twenty five, on second reading this evening.
I make say it motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, or are we going to start all voice vote on my, my left, Counsel Duffer?
No.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. General ordinance number six, two thousand twenty five, passes by a vote of four to three on second reading this evening. Up next, we have general ordinance number six, two thousand twenty five, which is the two thousand twenty six budget. That is up for third and final reading this evening. I'll defer to the clerk treasurer to read it into the record.
Okay. Ordinance number six, be it ordained, resolved by the city of Beech Grove that for the expenses of Beech Grove Civil City for the year ending December thirty first, twenty twenty six, the sums herein specified are hereby appropriated and ordered set apart out of the several funds herein named and for the purposes herein specified, subject to the laws governing the same. Such sums herein appropriated shall be held to include all expenditures authorized to be made during the year unless otherwise expressly stipulated and provided for by law. In addition, for the purposes of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses of Beech Grove Civil City, the property tax levies and property tax rates, as herein specified, are included herein. Budget form four B for all funds must be completed and submitted in the manner prescribed by the Department of Local Government Finance. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval by the city of Beech Grove. Name of adopting entity, city of Beech Grove. Type of adopting entity, common council and mayor. Date of adoption, October twentieth, twenty twenty five. Fund, rainy day, adopted budget, zero. Adopted tax, zero. Adopted tax rate, zero point zero. General fund, adopted budget, twelve million four hundred thirteen thousand nine hundred thirty nine dollars. Adopted tax levy, eight million one hundred ten thousand dollars. Adopted tax rate, one point one five eight six. Public safety, local income tax, adopted budget, two million seven hundred twenty eight thousand six hundred ninety one dollars. Adopted tax levy, zero. Adopted tax rate, zero. Lease rental payment, adopted budget, one million seventy seven thousand dollars. Adopted tax levy, one million thirty four thousand dollars. Adopted tax rate, zero point one four seven seven. Fire pension, adopted budget, forty thousand. Adopted tax levy, zero. Adopted tax rate, zero. Police pension, adopted budget, five hundred seventy thousand six hundred twenty dollars. Adopted tax levy, two thousand dollars. Adopted tax rate, zero point zero 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 three. Local road and street, adopted budget, four hundred seventy six thousand five hundred eighty five dollars. Adopted tax levy, zero. Adopted tax rate, zero. Motor vehicle highway, adopted budget, one million five hundred ninety two thousand three hundred forty five dollars. Adopted tax levy, one million sixteen thousand dollars. Adopted tax rate, zero point one four five one. Continuing education, adopted budget, twenty thousand. Adopted tax levy, zero. Adopted tax rate, zero. Park non-reverting capital, adopted budget, ten thousand. Adopted tax levy, zero. Adopted tax rate, zero. Adopted budget amounts for all funds, eighteen million nine hundred twenty nine thousand one hundred eighty dollars. Adopted tax levy for all funds, ten million one hundred sixty two thousand dollars, and adopted tax rate for all funds listed, one point four five one seven. Home rule funds that are not reviewed by the Department of Local Government Finance, home rule fund number eight, which is SRO's, adopted budget, four hundred ninety five thousand two hundred forty dollars. Home rule fund ten, which is opioid restricted, thirteen thousand one hundred seventy nine dollars, and home rule fund number eleven for opioid non-restricted, three thousand two hundred twenty five dollars, for a total of five hundred eleven thousand six hundred forty four dollars.
Thank you. General ordinance number six, two thousand twenty five, which is the two thousand twenty six budget for the civil city of Beech Grove, is up for third and final reading this evening. Any questions or comments? Counsel Duffer.
On the fire pension, since they took over the fire department, what's the forty thousand for?
So, we still have some retirees who receive pension benefits and life, life insurance policies because they retired before that, that agreement took place.
Okay.
So, we wanted to stand by behind what the city offered them when they retired, and that was to provide a life insurance policy for them at that time. It doesn't get used much. I don't know if we've used, last time it was, but that is there for that reason, just in case. Any other questions? If not, I've entertaining motion to approve general ordinance number six, two thousand twenty five, which is the two thousand twenty six budget on third and final reading.
I make say it motion.
Counsel Freyson, second?
I'll second.
Counsel Lamping, we'll start with voice vote. Counsel Duffer.
No.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
General ordinance number six, two thousand twenty five, which is the two thousand twenty six, passes on third and final reading this evening by a voice vote of four, two, three. Thank you, counselors. New business this evening. We do have resolution number three, two thousand twenty five, which is for the comprehensive plan, which is what the RDC and the city of Beech Grove has been working on for over a year at least. So, I sent that all to you. If you had a chance to review that, so part of the process of approving this is the RDC adopting a resolution. It comes to the city, Beech Grove City Council to approve a resolution, and it goes back to the RDC for a true and final adoption vote with them. I'll read a little summary here that was provided by the president, Matthew Cochiver, in his email to you, to the council members earlier. Beech Grove Redevelopment Commission approved a final version of the Consolidated Economic and Redevelopment Plan drafted by Rundell Ernst Berger Associates, also known as REA, at their August two thousand, August twenty second, two thousand twenty five meeting. They proceeded to amend the city's redevelopment plan under Indiana Code thirty six dash seven dash fourteen to add this new plan. This approval process is the same as when the RDC seeks to create or amend a TIF allocation area. The RDC adopted RDC Resolution two thousand twenty five dash five, which is a declaratory resolution to formally amend the city's redevelopment plan to add the new consolidated plan at its September meeting. The next step, as mentioned, is for the city council to adopt a resolution to approve of their declaratory resolution. And this all pertains back to state code and the process that we have to abide by to actually adopt this plan. This matter is on your agenda for the October twentieth, two thousand twenty five meeting. Once the city council approves this, then the last step will be for the RDC to hold a public hearing on amending the city redevelopment plan, and after the public hearing, adopt a confirmatory resolution, completing the process and formally adding the consolidated, consolidated plan to the city's redevelopment plan. This will complete a years-long process and allow the RDC and the city to move forward with beginning the new development, new redevelopment projects into reality. So, you, hopefully you've had a chance to review that plan. I'm excited for it. I think it's a great plan. There's a lot of, a lot of potential. There's a lot of good things in areas in the city that are just primed for redevelopment. So, I look forward to having this plan as a working document, something that we can provide to developers and to those interested in investing in our city. So, with that, before we get any questions, I'll have the clerk treasurer read this into the record, and then we'll have a discussion. Clerk Treasurer Stratton.
Resolution number three, twenty twenty five, a resolution of the common council of the city of Beech Grove, Indiana, approving redevelopment commission resolution number twenty twenty five dash five and its adoption of the two thousand twenty five Consolidated Economic and Redevelopment Plan as consistent with the plan of development for the city. Whereas pursuant to Indiana Code thirty six, seven, fourteen, the city of Beech Grove Redevelopment Commission adopted on August thirty first, two thousand five, resolution number one dash two thousand five, creating the Beech Grove Integrated Redevelopment Area and adopted a redevelopment plan for the redevelopment area. And whereas on March sixth, two thousand eight, the commission amended resolution one dash two thousand five through the adoption of resolution one dash two thousand eight, which expanded the redevelopment area and modified the plan. And whereas resolution one dash two thousand eight confirmed that the common council of the city of Beech Grove, Indiana, found the amendments to the redevelopment area and plan to be consistent with the plan and/or the comprehensive development plan for the city of Beech Grove by common council resolution three dash two thousand eight. And whereas the commission adopted on September eighteenth, two thousand twenty five, declaratory resolution number twenty twenty five dash five attached hereto as exhibit A, amending resolution number one dash two thousand eight and the plan by creating a new Consolidated Economic and Redevelopment Plan to replace the existing plan. And whereas as a redevelopment commission of an excluded city, as described in section one B of the act, the commission was not required to submit the declaratory resolution and supporting data to the planned commission as described in section sixteen of the act. And whereas section sixteen D of the act requires the common council to approve the declaratory resolution in two thousand twenty five Consolidated Plan as consistent with the plan of development for the city of Beech Grove. Now therefore be it resolved by the common council of the city of Beech Grove, Indiana as follows. One, the common council finds that the declaratory resolution in two thousand twenty five Consolidated Plan conformed to the plan of development for the city of Beech Grove. Two, the action of the commission on September eighteenth, two thousand twenty five, as described in the declaratory resolution, is in all respects approved, ratified, and confirmed by the common council. Three, this resolution shall be effective from and after its passage and approval by the mayor of the city of Beech Grove, Indiana.
Thank you, clerk treasurer Stratton. So, attached to that is a resolution that was passed by the Beech Grove RDC, as mentioned. Any questions or comments about this plan?
Has any TIF zones changed, either added or subtracted?
Not as part of this plan, no. That would have to come to the council, as mentioned. And no, not, this plan does not adopt any new TIF areas. All that is done outside of this plan. This includes all the current TIF areas in the city of Beech Grove. It goes outside of it, so it's not just based on TIF areas. It's based on other areas throughout the city, so it's a comprehensive plan, not just the TIF plan.
I just personally want to thank the RDC, Mr. Copenhever, all the hard work that was put into this, the time, all the outreach, all the special meetings, all the efforts made. This comprehensive plan, from what I understand, is well, long overdue. It's very important for us to grow as a city as far as development purposes, so hopefully we can put this to good use, and this will be a great benefit to our city. I just want to thank the RDC personally for all the hard work that they put into this and time and effort.
Yes.
Does, does this in any way change what, how the RDC receives money and distributes the funds without any kind of oversight?
Not at all. It has nothing to do with funding. This is just basically, just a roadmap of, of what the city, who the city of Beech Grove is. Our residents or what our residents are based out of, talks about the housing market, talks about our TIF areas, our business districts, talks about everything as a whole. It does not have anything to do with budgets or funding or anything. It actually would probably open us to additional funding because we have that plan. But no, it does not pertain to any type of funding whatsoever. Any other questions? I just want to echo what Counsel Lamping said, that the RDC did a, it's been a lot of work for this plan to come to fruition. There is steering committees and public hearings and meetings for the community to come. There is steering committees and public hearings and meetings for the community to come out and provide information and data and suggestions and look at maps and share ideas and kind of bounce ideas off each other. So, I appreciate everybody's, everybody's work on that. I'm excited for this plan. There's been a, been a lot of excitement behind it. I'm excited to put it to work and work with the RDC to see how we can continue to entice developers and continue to improve the city of Beech Grove. So, that being said, any other comments or questions? Entertaining motion to approve resolution number three, two thousand and twenty-five.
I'll make said motion to approve resolution number three, twenty twenty-five.
I'm second in motion.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you. That is all we have under new business. Clerk Treasurer, we'll send that around for your signature, please. And move on to counselor comments. Start here, let's start with Counselor Duffer, start with you, sir.
No comment.
No comment.
I just want to thank everyone for all the hard work, everything it took into coming up with this budget. I specifically want to thank the council. We had a workshop, we realized that we had to make some changes. I want to thank all the department heads, everyone who came. If it wasn't for the council, we would have been voting on a budget that was not decreased by over six hundred thousand dollars. The council is the one who pushed and prodded and emailed and consulted and did all the hard work to get this budget decreased because this budget would have had a completely different face. We did not cut any services, we did not defund anyone. We will see to it that everyone gets everything that they need. The future, no one knows. But, you know, we're dealt what we've dealt through the state legislature, and hopefully whatever happens now with the shell game of bait and switch as far as increased local income tax and other things that's going to have to bring money in, we'll just have to really come together, unite, and really work hard on what we're, what's expected in the future for our city and keep the city, keep our services, don't lose any jobs, and maintain all that's good in Beech Grove. So, I just want to thank the citizens, and I truly want to recognize that the city, the people of Beech Grove, they are the driver, they're the ones that keeps us trained on the tracks. It's the citizens, the people of Beech Grove, and we owe everything to them. So, again, thank the department heads for the hard work and making some great changes, and let's just move on to have a, hopefully, a better day. Thank you very much.
I think Liz really said pretty much everything. I, I really wish that the ones that weren't in favor of it, we could have heard a little bit more about ideas or changes. But, in the end, I guess we all have our, our reasons, and, you know, I applaud everybody for coming around and making the cuts, just like Liz said. You know, that's what it's about, the city needs to thrive, and we don't know what's going to happen in the next, you know, ten, ten years or so. Let's hope that they figure something out within the year, and next year, we'll be up here having a balanced budget again, and everybody can have a raise again. If not, just everybody understand that, you know, it's going to get tight, and we're going to have to make cuts where we have to. We might not all have raises. Doesn't mean we don't respect you and appreciate the jobs that you do. It just means we all need tightening the belt, and, you know, we'll all be doing it all around. It won't just be you, it won't be a reflection of your job. It will be just what we all will have to do in order to keep the city moving forward. Thank you for coming up.
Counselor Lamping.
Very well put, Counselor Mattkins. And with that said, yeah, the budget's never fun. You don't care, you know, what kind of money you're dealing with. But, so, yeah, it is what it is, it's gotten, you know, Beech Grove will be here tomorrow and the next day. So, just brought you up with trick or treaters, everybody.
I just want to say thank you to everyone that care about Beech Grove, mayor, secretary, to all that care. I appreciate and thankful for our officers. I got a call from one, and everybody seemed to care, and I'm just thankful for that.
Is that it? I just want to echo what everybody else said up here, too. And first, I want to thank our first responders and all of our city services that do so well for our city. I sent a message out to District Five today, and I just want to reiterate in front of the city. We're, I was glad to vote today to give everybody what they, what they wanted, what they needed. But, just like everybody said, you know, after this year, there's no guarantee. So, you know, let's hopefully buckle up and make sure that we can make some right decisions next year, and that's all I got.
Thank you. Couple things real quick. Thank you, counselors, for your work on the budget the last few months. I appreciate your help. I'm excited for two thousand twenty-six, and I look forward to another great year for the city of Beech Grove. Some big news this evening. As mentioned earlier, the groundbreaking for the Mechanical Skills Incorporated Plumbing School is scheduled for Monday, November third, at ten thirty a.m. So, hopefully you guys can attend that. I'm thrilled to see this development of the old Marsh property officially begin. Final Clean City Initiative will take place on Saturday, November seventh, from nine to noon behind City Hall. And finally, the next city council meeting is scheduled for Monday, November third, two thousand and twenty-five. That is all I have. Motion to adjourn.
I make said motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned at seven fifty-six. Thank you.